Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting of the City Council to order for Tuesday, December 19th. I will entertain a roll call from Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Eric?
Present.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Annie. Our invocation tonight will be given by Jessica Cooper of Hope City Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Staley.
If everyone could please bow their heads. Father, we love you and we praise you, Father, and we thank you for this evening. Father, I pray over the men and the women in this council, Father. I pray over them, their health, Father. I pray for their leadership, Father. I pray that they would always lead with integrity and honor. Father, I pray over every decision that they make, Lord, that it would be a benefit to the people of this city, Father, and they would leave a legacy for generations. Father, I pray over this meeting tonight. Father, I pray your protection and I pray peace. And I pray for the people that are here that have things to present, Father. I pray that they be able to articulate what they need to articulate and they are able to be heard. And, Father, I pray that everything happens tonight, Lord, would be a blessing again for the people and be a benefit for the community for generations to come. So, Father, we praise you and we thank you, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. We do have two individuals that would like to speak at call to the public. Ken Winchell, Winchell, would you please come up to the podium? Will you state your name for the record, please?
Ken Winchell. Thank you, and I hope you guys are having a good evening. I came here tonight to express the opinion that we need in Olive Garden Restaurant here in Kingman. And the closest restaurant is, well, take your pick, either Flagstaff, Henderson, or Prescott. And all of those are within two, two-and-a-half hour drive. I believe that if we get an Olive Garden Restaurant here, not only the I-40 corridor would be a great boon to that, but also people living in Golden Valley, Bullhead, would also come here to partake in that restaurant. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you very much for allowing me to address you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next call to the public, Mike Goodwin. Will you please state your name?
Michael Goodwin. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm here today for El Rancho with the residents of El Rancho. Our street is just a terrible mess. I was here on the 3rd of October and asked that the city comes out and does some grading. Well, it took several weeks to get somebody out there. They came out, made two passes, you know, tore the road up more than anything, graded back through, watered it, and then, you know, what's happened is they put some millings down like an inch to maybe two inches two years ago. Well, it takes two to three inches really to do any kind of a compaction for a road as the code. You know, I think they tried to do something, they didn't. What's happened is this turns everything, brings all the dirt, dust, all the dirt right to the top, all those millings go to the bottom. And until we can get the proper amount of millings out there, it's never really going to be right. And it's, you know, there's nice homes out there. We need more attention. And I ask you, drive down El Rancho and please take a peek at it, and you'll see where I'm talking about. My background is I'm a licensed contractor in two states, a member of the ICBO, which is also the International Conference of Builders. So, I do know about building and I do know some codes. I've done shopping centers, I've done some big work, and it's really embarrassing to see what's being done here. But I'm told that, you know, there's budget, and I understand budget, but we need to get somebody out there to take some, a look at it and do it properly. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Manager Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I will work with Public Works to go back out. I know after Mr. Goodwin had reported this, we did go out and do some blading, but as he's reporting it, he doesn't feel that was adequate. So, we'll go back and look. I know that Councilmember Ward drove me out there actually, and I saw that area firsthand as well. So, we will be following up on this matter.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item of business we have is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? No? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Eric. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to old business. There is no old business. Moving on to new business. Item A, new business, NLC Centennial Roadshow, 100 years, 100 cities. The National League of Cities is a membership organization comprised of cities, towns, and villages that are fostered on improving the quality of life for their current and future constituents. As the NLC approaches its centennial milestone in 2024, the organization is preparing for a year-long celebration of activities, events, and celebrations highlighting its members, partners, and the progress it has accomplished over the years. At the heart of this celebration, NLC is hitting the road for what is called the NLC Centennial Roadshow, 100 years, 100 cities. Councilmember Jengus Eric has requested that the City Council have the City of Kingman participate in this event. In order to be considered as one of the 100 cities visited, Kingman would need to submit an online application form no later than January 31st, 2024. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Eric? Do you want to comment on this?
I think as Kingman is growing and getting ready to shine, we should invite as many eyes to see us as possible, including something that's so nationwide as NLC. It would be a nice opportunity for us to highlight Route 66, our downtown, a new downtown project, as well as our booming population growth as well.
Perfect. Manager Miller?
Yes. Councilmember Eric asked me about this, and I was unaware of it until he brought it to my attention. I just think this is a great idea. This is incredible. I already know we're on the map, but I think that this only reinforces our tourism efforts, and I think we stand a really good chance because of where we're located and with the Route 66 and the history with that. And they're likely probably go, I would think, through the Grand Canyon area, and so I think we're really right in the crossroads where this NLC roadshow would take place. So, I highly recommend the council consider this, and if so, I've already volunteered the tourism staff to help with the application process. Plus, they also have some collateral materials that have been requested, so I think it'd be a really good thing for us to do.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
What, Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes. Counselor Savage?
Yes, hello. Counselor Eric, I commend you for looking this up. Do we have anticipated dates of when this may take place?
So, as far as I know, they're just, they're still accepting applications, I think, till February?
January. It's January 31st.
They're looking at this being almost like a year-long celebration of the 100 years. So, good counsel, or a good question, Councilmember Savage, but they are looking at this being a year-long process once they've identified the cities, that they will then go ahead and promote it, and they'll start doing that. And it'll probably take many months. There's also going to be some cities that they may select that will be more of a virtual kind of arrangement. I'm really hopeful that they come on boots on the ground here in town.
I totally agree with that. I think it's a great opportunity. I'm just hoping that they give enough ample time for the selected cities to be prepared for this, but all in all, great idea. Very behind it.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. All right. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. It's so popular, everyone jumped in. Counselor Eric, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. Item 4B, Centennial Park Ball Field Lighting Project. Centennial Park Field Light Fixure Updates on Fields 2 and 3 were scheduled to be done this year. After meeting with MUSCO ball field lighting experts and our park maintenance leadership team to evaluate all of the ball field lighting at Centennial and Southside Parks, it was determined that Field 5 lighting project should be moved ahead of Fields 2 and 3 fixtures. City staff is recommending approval for this project utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Number 041123-MSL. The cost of replacement is $419,000. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. This item before you is basically, as it states, for the replacement of the lights that we have over at Centennial Park. Musco Lighting is, I would have to tell you, probably the premier outdoor sports lighting company out there. And this is, from what I can tell, a really good deal, and this has basically been in the capital improvement program for a while, and we've also have phased these lights in so they're not too big of a hit all at one time. I'll turn it over to Parks and Rec Director Mike Miersman, who has additional details about this project and about the award of the contract.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I don't really have a lot of information, but I will share with you some interesting things. I think really, what we discovered, too, is Field 5 is the oldest metal haloid lights we have, which are 75% less efficient than the LED lights, and they're 40% more efficient than the ones on Field 2 and 3. Field 2 and 3 are 40% more efficient. So, we think it's the right thing to do, and we also found out that there's still warranty left on Fields 5, Fields 2 and 3. And so, there's no sense really replacing those at this time, even though they still do need to be replaced to get more energy efficient. And the Musco Lightings, like the city manager stated, they really do a great job of lighting the subject area and not lighting everything else. So, they really are very good about that. And this would also be the last of the wooden poles at Centennial Park, and it's also going to allow us to back the fields up at Centennial Park. We're going to move these light poles back, which is, it's going to give us some longer fields. The only problem we have at Centennial Park for a lot of big tournaments for higher level softball players is that our fields are a little short. So, this is going to make Field 5 our longest field, so that's another positive. And it also will light up an area between Fields 5 and Field 3, which is another nice, we'd be able to utilize that for other things as well. So, youth soccer possibly, for little kids soccer in that area. It's a small area, but still it's going to light up a larger area.
Mike, if I may interrupt you, too, could you just kind of explain the very long-life warranty? It's kind of unprecedented with this kind of purchase with these types of fixtures. So, you want to kind of explain that, too?
Yeah, it's just, like I said, a 25-year warranty, I believe is what it is, and it's, like I said, the ones on Field 2 and 3 still have 10 years left on them, which we didn't really know that until we did a little research into them, so.
And it's not a pro-rated warranty? So, that's very unusual on anything, so.
Very good. I mean, they're Cadillac, they really are. I mean, there's no question about it, so. And I think, basically, that's all I have, really additional information to share with you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Miersman? Mr. Savage, do you have any questions? Hearing none?
Nope. No.
Okay.
I started playing softball there when I was 16, so I'm surprised the lights are still on.
Thank you. All right. No questions. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Miersman.
Thank you. A little bit of exciting news, too. It's part of this, and I don't know if Carl might not like me talking about, we did a meeting with J2 Engineering about Sunbelt Park today, so we had a meeting on the site and everything, so it's kind of exciting.
Is he pitching for Sunbelt Park? My apologies for calling it MUSCO. It should be Musco. I'm not a lighting expert. All right. Item 4C, Final Plat Wallock Ranch Track 1961K, Resolution Number 5458. A request from Pioneer Title Agency Incorporated Trustee under Trust 9293, Property Owner and Mojave Engineering Associates Incorporated, Project Engineer, for the approval of the final subdivision plat and improvement plans for Wallock Ranch Track 1961K. The improvement plans have been reviewed under permit Engineering 21-0094 by the Engineering Department. The developer has also offered a property escrow assurance agreement to assure the completion of all required subdivision improvements. The agreement will allow the final plat to be recorded, but will not allow any individual lots to be sold until all required subdivision improvements are completed and accepted by the council. This will need to occur within 24 months unless extended by council resolution. Once all of the improvements are completed, they will need to be accepted by the council for city maintenance, and the property escrow assurance agreement can then be released. Staff recommends approval. I'm going to recuse myself because it does mention my employer, so I will turn this over to Counselors Staley.
And I will ask the city manager.
Thank you. I'll be very quick on this. Our Development Services Director, our interim Development Services Director, Mike Rodriguez, is going to come up and just give you a briefing on this particular agenda item.
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. As Grady mentioned, this is just pretty much a straightforward recordation of a final plat that's in accordance with the previously approved preliminary plat. One of the things I wanted to make note of is on your subject line, it states it's Resolution 5458, which actually, we've corrected that, the attached resolution is Resolution Number 5484. This is to approve the final subdivision plat, the improvement plans, and accepting the property escrow assurance agreement for Wallock Ranch. It's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, technical questions, city engineers here to answer those, and as I can as well.
Does the council have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I haven't.
Okay. If I can get a motion to approve Resolution Number 5484.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Counselors Staley. Item 4D, Proposed Reorganization of the Community Development Department. Consideration of reorganizing the Community Development Department into a new Development Services Department to improve work processes, operations, and improve turnaround time on subdivision plats, building permits, and code complaints, and approve various recommended measures related to the reorganization as outlined in the council communication. Staff recommends approval. City Manager Miller?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. The item before you, as mentioned, is a reorganization of the Community Development Department. So, as you recall, when you went through the budget process last year, you actually kind of had the community development created as a standalone department and kind of unencumbered it from the fire department, which the fire department still, because there hadn't been a Development Services Director, had still had the direct report relationship between the fire chief and the community development manager. But the council had the insight to actually create a Development Services Director, which was missing. And so, that was done as part of the budget process. Since I've been here, it's been very obvious to me that there are certain things that just, there are some operational issues and some concerns with turnaround times and plan review concerns and things that we've heard both from the development community, but also even mom and pops that have submitted, you know, plans for plan reviews. And so, when I took a look at this and I started looking at the organization a little bit more deeply, there were a number of things that were done several years ago that I just was scratching my head and couldn't quite understand why they were done. And it's not to be critical, because I definitely was looking at a vacuum, and the reasons for it probably made sense at the time, but the way that the Community Development Department was structured and organized, it just did not make sense. And I see much of the problem is due to the lack of staffing. The staffing that we had assigned to actually do plan review and inspections, we really had only two people, really, that are doing what I would call plan examining and also doing inspections. So, that is just unrealistic for what we're going through right now for growth. So, in recognizing that, what you have before you tonight is a number of measures that I am recommending to address this. And also want to let you know, too, just to give you a little bit of a heads-up, that if you were to approve these tonight, this would go into effect January 1st. But going forward, there will also be other supplemental budget requests that you will see through the budget process, because I'm believing that we're not done, but I do believe what we're doing here tonight would address our current needs. Now, speaking of current needs, we would need to also probably have our outsourcing company that helps us step up so we can catch up on our backlog. That's one of the things that's not mentioned in the staff report, but that's something I've met with our Development Services Director, and that's something we're planning on doing. So, without taking too much more time on kind of the background information, I thought I'd go ahead and go through the recommendations that are before you tonight. So, the first is to retitle the newly created Community Development Department to Development Services Department. That's consistent with the title that the council approved for the budget for Development Services Director. It doesn't make sense to have a different department name than the director, so that's the very first thing that I'm recommending. The other recommendation is seeking to authorize you to convert the Assistant City Manager position into two Building Inspector positions to provide additional staffing for plan reviews and inspections. I understand at the time, when the council wanted an Assistant City Manager, there were some concerns and issues with the previous manager, and they thought that having this position, having oversight over the Development Services area made a lot of sense. My belief in just looking at the organization, that the Assistant City Manager might be perhaps in the newly reorganized department, might be a little bit too much overhead as far as too much in the way of management. They really need people that are doing the work, the plan review and the inspections and such like that. So, what I'm suggesting is to take the Assistant City Manager position and convert it into two Building Inspectors. Now, our Building Inspectors currently work and do plan reviews and inspections. We're likely going to be addressing that in the future, where we will have dedicated plan examiners, so that's all they do, and then having inspectors only do inspections. But that will likely come next year when we have additional requests for plan examiners. The next recommendation is the transfer of two Neighborhood Service Officers from the Police Department to the Development Services Department to centralize code enforcement activities. This is something we've all heard about from residents. They want to report a code complaint, and they will sometimes contact community development directly, they'll sometimes contact the fire department, or they'll contact the Police Department. And the Police Department, the way it works right now is the Neighborhood Services Officers, there's four of those positions there. They handle animal control as one of their primary functions, but they also get involved and handle code complaints. So, this is a very, not, this is an atypical, I don't want to say you don't see this anywhere else, you will see it in much smaller cities where they just don't have the staffing, and they'll have these via a multi-use kind of position. So, what I'm recommending is to transfer the two positions from the Police Department over to the Development Services, I'm sorry, the Development Services Department. And then, they will report to the, what I'm calling the newly titled Building Safety Neighborhood Services Manager. So, right now, we have a Community Development Manager, that is Sean Osterman. Right now, he's also involved in planning and zoning. His function would be strictly related to building safety, which is plan reviews and inspections and also code enforcement. Those are areas he's very competent and very familiar with, and so that would be something that would be changed. I also want to just kind of talk a little bit about the Neighborhood Service Officers that are in the Police Department. So, one of the things that I want to also ensure is that since they are involved in animal control, I've been working and having some discussions with the police chief about seeing if we also have an intergovernmental agreement with Mojave County for backup. Not saying it's our primary would only be in the event of a, you know, for callouts if, for some reason, we had both of our Neighborhood Service Officers that are assigned to the Police Department out. So, that's something he's looking into, and it's not been something that has been finalized yet, but he'll be working towards. That is a possibility. The other thing that is different is that the Development Services Director will have primary responsibility for planning and zoning and will serve as the principal planner. So, what does that mean? It means that when you have planning and zoning commission meetings, it will primarily be either the Development Services Director or the planners. The planners will work directly for the Development Services Director, but it'll be either the director, or he may assign that, you know, particular case to one of the planners. So, and you typically find when you hire permanent Development Services Directors, they typically have very heavy planning experience, so that's a positive there. And as it turns out, our current interim Development Services Director has really good background, both on the planning side, but also on the building safety side. So, then, I was very surprised when I was preparing this report, I had no idea that the, when the Community Development Department was created, that four of the Building and Life Safety Inspector positions still remain. still remain in the Community Development Department. Now, initially, I was thinking, well, why couldn't these people be cross-trained and be, you know, Building Inspectors? The issue is, they have been, they are not trained for that. They're only, their training is in the Fire Plan Review and the Fire Inspections, and they are primarily involved historically in doing what I would call the Community Education Activities and Fire Prevention Activities. And so, in my opinion, this is something that probably should have transferred through the budget process this current year, but it just didn't happen. So, as part of this reorganization, as you can see, I'm trying to extricate and put people where they need to belong, and so that's what I'm trying to do here as well. And then, finally, it was very obvious to me in my evaluation of all these processes and what the council was wanting, they really wanted to have a number-two person, from what I can tell. You really wanted to have an Assistant City Manager. What you will see in smaller cities is, you'll find that a Deputy City Manager designation will also be given to a highly competent Department Director. And so, you have all worked with our Finance Director, Tina Moline, and so what I'm recommending is that her position be reclassified from Finance Director to Deputy City Manager slash Finance Director. This is a position that would serve as the backup to the manager when the manager's off or out of town, or away from the office, or at the council. It's your go-to person if the manager's not available. Also, this person, or I should say, this position, will also be responsible for special projects and assignments, and that's a very common role. I don't anticipate, because we are a small organization, I do not anticipate that the Deputy City Manager would actually have supervisory control, but that's not to say it couldn't change in the future. So, that is the presentation tonight on the reorganization. I would be happy to answer any questions you have. What we are anticipating is to put this into effect January 1st, but we're also trying to find space, and we're working on the space details right now. So, it may be, some people have to stay in place, like maybe the Neighborhood Service Officers may need to stay in place where they're at right now until we can get that done, but supervisory control, if the council approves this tonight, would be for two of those to be under the newly created Neighborhood... I'm sorry, the Building Safety Neighborhood Services Manager. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor, are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead. No, I'm good.
All right, Counselor Staley, we'll start with you.
You know, one of the priorities in creating or creating this new position for the Community Development Services Manager, what are we calling him now? Development Services Department, is that there would be accountability. So, will this Director of this department, when they're hired, he or she is hired, will they be ultimately accountable for how long it takes for plans to be reviewed? For any issues, for communication, customer service? Will this position be the person that we would go to if there is a backlog or if there are complaints from citizens?
So, are we talking about the Development Services Director?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's no different than any of the other Department Directors. The only thing that I think of, when the interim Director came in, I believe I gave him 12 bulleted priorities, and these are all what I heard from you. And so, he's working towards those right now. One of the things that I would anticipate, and we've talked about this already, I'll likely be gone, but when the new manager's here, I would like him to actually give a report back to you on the activities since he's been here. That would be about three months since he's been here. And for him to give a report, he's already identifying areas such as trying to kind of have like what I call a triage, I hate to say that, because it's not a medical field or anything, but he's already identified where we can start splitting off what I call the quick and easy kind of building plan permit process, where it doesn't take as much time, so let's get through those and have that go down this path, and this staff will look at this, and then the things that are a lot more complicated, then we'll handle it this way. So, I'm already feeling very good about where we're going. I, again, I think when it comes down to it, we're woefully understaffed, and we're still not going to quite be there, but one of the things that he has come up with, and so did Sean as well, was that we also have maybe another counterperson that handles things right at the counter. Very simple things, if someone walks in, you know, I call it a mom and pop, it would be like a resident that comes in with maybe a garden shed or has a very simplified, maybe an expansion of a patio, or covered patio or something. Something that could be done right then and there. That's what we're kind of aiming for, for the customer service to improve. Now, we're, as you know, we're still trying to get our online system up for building permits, and we've had some delays on that, but that's going to complement, I think, some of these processes that we're trying to improve. So, a very good point. Yes, there will be accountability. I'm sorry, I gave you a very long answer to that.
It's okay. I appreciate all of the details. My other question is whether or not the Director will have the oversight to be able to coordinate between different departments, so that everybody's not working in a vacuum, but that person can go and say, hey, you're behind on this, or you need to answer this person, or you need to be at this meeting, because it does seem like there was some fracturing, and everybody has to participate in this process, and if you don't sort of have a coordinator or somebody that has the authority to coordinate, we may still find ourselves in these same, with these same problems.
So, I think that the manager's going to have to really keep the eye on the ball when he or she comes on. And the Development Services Director is certainly going to play probably one of the more major roles here, because of all the different components and functions are in that department. But I'll give you kind of a clue on, right now, we have a, we have what we call a pre-application meeting. So, typically, we will meet before an application is submitted, and that's something they've been doing for years, and it works very effectively. It allows the staff to identify potential concerns or issues that the applicant may not be aware of. For instance, maybe the zoning doesn't allow that type of use, or maybe they may not be aware that there may be some drainage issues or concerns. So, we try to get those things on the front end, so there's no surprises when they submit their plans. So, that's a very coordinated process right now. And all the different major players are all sitting at the table with the applicant at the same time. So, what I think, what I would see and like to see is that the Development Services Director kind of continues that with the normal plan review process. And we have already started identifying, we already have some, like for instance, subdivision plats has like a 95-day, you know, supposed to be a turnaround time and that kind of thing. What I would anticipate, and this will help once we have an online system, but that that person kind of plays more like the project manager to make sure things are moving and going through, and printing reports, and when the reports are showing that there's a delay somewhere, he can then, or she can then troubleshoot those. So, that's what I anticipate. And the reason why I mentioned the new manager, the new manager is going to need to make sure that he or she is getting those reports as well. And if he or she is starting to notice something, it's another layer or safety net to make sure things are happening. And I'm very convinced, if we add additional staffing next year, I'm not talking a lot, but I'm thinking in anticipation of some of these major subdivisions, and also the commercial activity that's going to result from the traffic interchanges, we're going to need to be positioned much better than we are currently, and I think that's going to be something that will help move us along, is to have the right number of staff.
Anything else? Okay. Counselor Walker?
I'm good.
Good? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say something.
Counselor Savage?
Hello, Vice Mayor. Manager Grady, I have no questions, but I just want to give you a big hat tip as far as what you've done in the time that you've been here, and to be able to find the weaknesses that we have and give us a forward-looking process to streamline things and have the people in the right place, I just want to say thank you very much. I'm going to be sad to see you go, but you've done an awesome job, and I think this puts us on the right foot, going in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and you know, I did all this talking, but it was a team approach. It really was all the Department Heads that were involved in this. It was just my kind of like looking in from the outside and just asking a lot of questions, but I had a lot of help from a lot of people. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? The only thing I wanted to ask is, under the, in our backup, under the fiscal impact, the reorganization, you're stating it's going to be less than $50,000 in expenditures for the current fiscal year?
Yeah, that's a little misleading. I wanted to let you know that's over and above what is already budgeted. So, right now, converting an Assistant City Manager position to two new positions, it's basically taking the money over here and plugging it over here. And then, even with the money that's left over, there's enough for a modest increase for the Deputy City Manager. So, the $50,000 is probably the net additional. So, if that makes sense?
Yes, and that's where I was going, because in the second sentence, it said there should be sufficient funding in the operating budgets, and I just was curious, because I don't like that "should be."
Let me make it very clear. There is sufficient. I've been assured by both the Manager, the, I'm sorry, the Community Development Manager, and also the Fire Chief, that there's enough for like some of the furnishings and things that we needed to do to make some of these, I don't want to call them tenant improvements, because we're not going to do probably too much major, but that is what that $50,000 would be for. So, we have, we believe, to be sufficient. And anything that we need to do that might be over and above, and we are not able to do it this fiscal year, will then just be something we'll address through the budget process for next fiscal year.
Okay, so, the improvements that are going to be made, the expenditures for the improvements, and the salary increase, the net is an additional $50,000 to our budget, no?
No. The, all the, everything that's related to salary and benefits for the, what's recommended to you tonight is covered with the Assistant City Manager salary that's already budgeted and approved by the council. Well, I do want to just point out one thing, though. As a result of, if the council acts favorably tonight on this, there's a couple of different things I need to do. One is, the, we're going to have a net increase of one full-time equivalent position, because really, you're taking one and turning it into, even though the money's there to pay for it. And then, secondly, I will have to come back next month for an official action from the council to reclassify the Deputy City Manager. So, tonight, I wanted to test the waters on that and see if you were in support of that. But our rules here, I found out after I prepared my staff report, that we, the Manager in the past has had broader discretion on things like retitling and rearranging employees, but reclassifications have always taken formal action by council, and the formal action has to be done by resolution. It was too late for me, once I found that out, to have you do that. So, while I would say it's good as gold and take it to the bank with you acting on it tonight, I just want to make sure that we do it properly and official. So, you'll see that reclassification come back next month.
Okay, great. So, there is a suggested motion in our backup. Does anyone want to make that motion? And read it as it is?
It's got to be a record-long motion. I do apologize.
I saw Carl looking at me.
I make that motion. Do we accept these changes?
Does he have to read it verbatim?
I would read it.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Move to approve the title of new Development Service Director, Service Department effective January 1st, 2024. From the previous Community Development Department, authorize the conversion of an Assistant City Manager position to two new additional Building Inspector positions. Authorize the transfer of four Building Life Safety Inspectors to the Fire Department. Authorize the transfer of two Neighborhood Service Officers from Police Department to the Development Services Department. Authorize and recommend salary range for reclassification of Finance Director to Deputy City Manager slash Finance Director, and authorize all position retitles, budget transfers, vehicle transfers, and other assets according to implement the reorganization.
Very nice. That's a motion. I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, moving on to Department Reports. 5A, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange Updates. Counselor Er...
Yes, our City Engineer Phil Allred will be giving you the latest update.
Welcome, Phil.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counselors. Just a brief update for the Kingman Crossing Interchange. Just want to let you know that we are still addressing comments from ADOT. Our engineer had a meeting last week with ADOT to address some of the comments regarding the Change of Access Report for that project, but things are moving forward in that regard. They informed me that they will be ready to submit their, hopefully, final plans to ADOT mid-January, and then ADOT will need a re-review, make sure that everything's been addressed. And so, that's where things stand on the Kingman Crossing Interchange. For the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange, we did receive comments from ADOT last week, and AECOM is reviewing those comments, and we'll start addressing them. We are planning to schedule a comment resolution meeting for the first or second week of January to discuss the comments that ADOT provided and any other remaining items that we need to coordinate with ADOT. And also, just wanted to report that we are preparing the FAA paperwork for the Notice of Alteration or Construction. That will allow us to move forward with construction on the airport property, and we're anticipating that to be submitted in the next month. So, with that, that's my brief update. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Allred? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, announcements by Mayor, Council, Council Members and City Managers. City Manager Miller?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Just really quick, I just wanted to remind the public that in observance of the Christmas holiday on December 25th, the City Hall and all offices and operations will be closed, except for police and fire, of course. And the same goes for New Year's Day on January 1st as well, and they both fall on Mondays this year. And as typical, the trash collection services are the same, where they will slide with the, with the collection, as we usually do for holidays. But I just wanted to highlight that for the public tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing.
Nothing? No? Counselor Eric?
I attended a CAMA meeting today, and they seem to be promoting programs where they incentivize hirings with subsidies, which seem very positive for our industrial community, and I think they're going to have some great success with that, so.
Great, thank you. Counselor Savage, do you have anything?
Not tonight.
I did want to relay a message from the Mayor. The Mayor's not available to be with us tonight, but he did want me to wish all the citizens of our fine community a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. So, that's from the Mayor, and as well from myself. So, moving on to council requests for future reports and updates. Any? Counselor Savage?
Not tonight.
All right. Meeting adjourned.